Evening everyone, Happy Saint Patrick's Day. The day when everyone is just a little bit Irish. So this is the March 17th meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education. So I'll now call that meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Take the roll. Stephen Lawrence.
Present.
Sarah Beth Delpree, not yet here. Jay Dye is excused this evening. Lauren Francasi, here. Brooke Hopkins, not here yet. Jeff Hughes, not here yet. Mike Strambler.
Here.
Erin Williamson.
Here.
And I'm the Chair Lynn Piazek. Staff and attendants this evening. Ms. Vonda Tenza, Superintendent. Ms. Donna Koonen, Director of Business and Operations. Ms. Annalisa Sherman, Principal. And Mr. James Sapias, Assistant Principal. Marcia DiGennaro, Clerk of the Board. Okay, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask everyone to please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe there's any correspondence, is that correct Marcia?
No.
Okay, we didn't receive anything either. Moving on to 2D is public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to make comment? I don't see any. Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda. The minutes from the February 12th special tri-board meeting and the February 24th regular meeting are included in this evening's consent agenda along with the budget narrative, budget summary, detailed financial report, and combining financial statements. Does anyone on the board wish to extract anything from tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none unless for a motion. Motion to accept the consent agenda. Stephen Lawrence, do I have a second? Mike Strambler. All those in favor? Unanimous Marcia, thank you. For A, Board Member Appreciation. Ms. Tenza.
I would like to be the one to take that piece of the agenda. So at each board member's seat this evening are a few treasures to help you celebrate your Board of Education Appreciation Month. So there's a statement from CAE which I thought was very well-written about why Board of Education's matter. You know, when you, when you have a chance, it's a, it's a good reflection on the work that you do as a group and as an organization. So there's a little card of gratitude for me, a little spirit gear with our new owl timber on it, and if you don't have the bright side, you can look. We can certainly swap it out, all you gotta do is let me know or let your child know, but it's, it's a cute little gear with timber on it.
Let me, let me model. Oh my gosh.
That's lovely.
Again, if it does not fit, we, we have many more because in May, for teacher appreciation. So, and a cupcake, we asked Jessica Hill of our food service to whip up a little festive treat for you, and she was happy to do that. So it's, it's kind of wrapping you up with love and appreciation from Beecher. And I, you know, I just want to say that this board and many other of our community boards are built around a spirit of volunteerism. So, you know, for zero pay, we have people in our community who gather regularly and share their talents and their passions and their skills, and they work toward a common vision. And each one of you has impact and each one of you matters significantly. And we have a very high-performing Board of Education, I'm very grateful for you. And as a retiring superintendent, I must say, and perhaps there are future candidates watching, a little plug, this is the best district you could ever work in with the best people. And somebody's going to be very lucky to lead our administrative team and our staff, it's a great place to be. So I am very appreciative. Board of Education decisions directly affect our staff and our students and our families. Your visions and your priorities shape the work and the leaders that we give to the future. Your decisions help shape the leaders that we give to the future. And, you know, for that, I'm grateful, you are collaborative, you have a high level of expertise, and above all, you have a sincere respect and love for our children and our community. And so, on behalf of your hard work, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mika, are you here because you want to do something or are you just watching?
Yes, it was a resolution that was accepted.
Since I watched that meeting. Please, come on up.
It's a good thing, otherwise you'd be singing or dancing if you were just listening.
I don't want to see that. Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to echo a lot of what Vonda Superintendent did say. Beecher is, in our community, it's, it's an integral part of our community. We sometimes, when we talk a little bit about the business of Woodbridge, and we talk about Beecher being the product of, of Woodbridge, certainly, almost 30 years ago, I moved into the town, my wife and myself moved into the town specifically for, for the education that, that we've, that we sought for our, our children. And I can tell you after those almost 30 years, that certainly everything we could have hoped for is, is, has come to fruition. And one of the things, one of the amazing things about Beecher, it not only provides for the 800 or so families that are directly impacted by it, with the 900 children who go there, 900 or so children who go there. But the community as a whole takes a great deal of pride in it, and you see that in the way that the people who support you, the people whose kids have gone, are out of school, and whose kids may be going to school again, whose grandkids are going to the school, and how those people support. And it just says a lot about what it, the fact that we can sustain it, and it's really done by the people like yourselves who do it. I, I often take time to try to thank the many volunteers who work in our town. And I certainly feel that it's very, very appropriate for us to at least once a year say to you folks in particular, because this is such an important thing and such an important element of our town, that at least once a year, we say to you, "Thank you, thank you very much." And to that end, the Board of Selectmen felt very much the same and wanted us, wanted to share this resolution. Whereas, an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future, the public schools are being held to a higher standard of accountability than ever before at both the state and federal levels. And whereas, the members of the Woodbridge Board of Education represent invaluable resource in this community as local decision-makers responding to the challenges of assuring our school meets these high standards, and the school, and the school board members must formulate policies to assure that all children learn to their fullest potential. And whereas, these board members continually strive for improvement and progress with an understanding of the needs for commitment to the highest standards of students' achievement, and are, are now working diligently to assure that our young people are educated and prepared for the future. And whereas, the men and women elected to these positions deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of volunteer service to public education and the children of our community. Now therefore, the Woodbridge Board of Selectmen and the Woodbridge School District thank all members of the Woodbridge Board of Education for their tireless and devoted service to our children, our school, and our community, and urge all residents of our community to join in expressing appreciation to these exemplary public servants, and hereby designate March 17th to 2025 as School Board Member Day. Thank you very much for everything that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and thank you, audience. We appreciate your class. When I was preparing for tonight's meeting, I thought, you know, I'd really like to take a moment as well to acknowledge the eight individuals who joined me at this board table on a monthly basis and at committee meetings and other meetings that we have. I'm just so proud to work with these committed community members who donate tons of hours each month to establish policies that provide the framework for our school district, they make meaningful decisions on school programming, they assist in the development of appropriate budgets that support high-quality education, and they assure that our facilities are well-maintained. I want to take a moment to salute each of you. You're extraordinary, and I am proud to call you my colleagues because you help to make the success of our community's children a real priority. And so, thank you very much, friends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I get all verklempt when I was preparing for the meeting tonight. Next on the agenda, thank you to the administration and the town for their support of the board's work and for our lovely t-shirts and cupcakes.
T-shirts are awesome.
Yep. And thank Jessica for us.
I certainly will.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Search Update, so I have just a few things. The board is aware of some of these things and, but I want to make the community aware of how we are progressing. On Monday, March 3rd, the Board of Education voted to act as the Personnel Search Committee for a new superintendent. It was agreed at that time to send requests for proposals to 13 educational search firms. The request has also been posted on the district website. The closing date for submission of the proposal is this Friday, March 21st at noon. To date, three firms have submitted a formal proposal, three have indicated that they will be submitting a proposal during this week, and one has responded that they are unable to fulfill our request at this time. So we will be scheduling a meeting probably at some point next week. Marcia will be reaching out to board members to get a date and time so that we can move the process along. So that's where we stand right now. Thank you. Welcome Sarah Beth. Superintendent's Report.
So I do have a brief report this evening. First of all, thank you, Mr. First Selectman, for being here tonight to, to thank our board. It's, it's appreciated and well-recognized that this community enjoys a strong partnership between our boards, so thank you for being here. Our enrollment is at 8:76, fairly consistent for the last few months. Everybody seems happy, they're working hard. Regarding our space project, the Antonazi and Associates presented a few more options for possible space considerations at our meeting last week. We meet every two weeks, public comment is welcome. The options range, again, from rearranging and repurposing current space to creating brand-new spaces with more than one floor. No decisions have been made, this information is being shared and will be shared with the community as it develops, and will be available for all to review prior to any decisions at the town level are made. Antonazi also shared that they are closer and closer to sharing costs for these different options, and I know that that's something that is really important for everybody because all of the cars look new and sparkly until you look at your budget. So, in terms of learning, there's so much happening, this is just that busy time of the year where it seems like the end is just zooming up, which it is, and our state assessments will start in, you know, just about a month or so, month and a half. But right now, we are knee-deep into the love of reading. We have our Read Across America later this week, so we should see many important celebrities in our town and community, in our school on Wednesday, the 19th at 9:00. I know I will be there, I know some of you will be there. We also kicked off the March Madness Book Bracket, and just the other day, I listened to one of our literacy specialists, Christina Conroy, read the first two competitor books, and they compete against each other, and the children vote, and they move along to, very similar to the basketball brackets. And the two competition books were Spoon, no, yes, Spoon and Chopsticks. It was a competition between would you rather be a spoon or a pair of chopsticks? And I personally would vote for Spoon because one page said, "Your other friends will never know the joy of diving headfirst into a bowl of ice cream." And I was sold on that line and the imagery that it created. So, again, you know, sharing that joy and love of reading at any age is the best way to develop a sense of community and a love of literature, and shared reading is one of the ways that we do that, when all of our children read the same books and have that common language. We have our final professional learning day in March for teachers, and we do appreciate this time to gather and learn together. You know, I know that perhaps in the future, our PDEC committee may start to kind of consider maybe different ways to spread that time out. It might not be a full day of March, and that's something that they're going to talk about next year, but for this year, we're grateful for the full day, and our topics include learning a little bit more about the mandated school climate policy, project-based learning continuation, curriculum development, and especially in the areas of 4-6 math and K-3 literacy, which were our focuses for the year. So it's nice for teachers to have that consistent thread. This district does a wonderful job of not just a hit-and-run delivery. They, they stay with a topic, they marinate with a topic, they give the teachers time to learn and grow, and I think that that's appreciated. So that is my quick update.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Ms. Strambler, are you this evening's presenter for Beecher Road School update? Thank you.
Sorry about the computer, my printer, I had some printer issues. So good evening, everybody. Let me start by also saying a huge thank you to all of you. It's a joy and a pleasure to work with each and every one of you, and I, I feel very grateful that we have such an incredibly supportive board and, of course, the town and community, and we're really lucky at Beecher Road School, and I hear stories from colleagues of mine in other districts, and I know just how lucky I am to work with all of you. So thank you, all the time, always, but especially this month. A few quick updates, we are so excited because we have been engaging in some really wonderful articulation conversations with members of the Boa region. The new Assistant Superintendent came on board at Amity High School, and she continued the work that the previous Assistant Superintendent had started. So they started actually with a science meeting. We had educators from the Boa region gathered together at the high school, and for us, we sent our two sixth-grade science teachers and our STEAM teacher, and they had the opportunity to collaborate and have a little bit of a vertical articulation conversation, and that is continuing with social studies and math. And then also independently of those conversations, our math specialist and our sixth-grade teachers are also meeting just directly with Amity Middle School Bethany, continuing to make sure that we are in alignment with our work that we do at Beecher, and our sending kids off to the middle school is something that's really important to us. So those conversations and meetings are happening. I actually sent an email off to my sixth-grade teachers to say, "Hey, do you want to go to the high school? They really want to get everyone together." And they wrote back, and they were like, "But is it okay if we go to two meetings? Because we're already going to the middle school." And I was like, "Yes, yes, do all the meetings, have all the conversations, it's great." So they're very excited about that work, it's been really wonderful. We recently completed our first round of kindergarten entrance assessments, you probably remember this, but they did change the law of the state, and now it is entry as of September 1st, you have to be five by September 1st, but parents are permitted to request a waiver and an assessment. We had less numbers this year requesting that assessment, but we still had a few. So we had some very adorable future Beecher Road School students bop their way into our building last week. It was really fun to welcome them, they were balls of cuteness, and some of them did really quite well, and we're going to be very happy to welcome them in the fall. Our next round is going to be in April, and then any other parents that miss that cutoff will get them in over the summertime. We do look forward to having our new kindergarten friends come join us in the fall. And we are moving, I should mention too, to an online registration portal, so that should be live probably tomorrow or the next day for our incoming new students. So all of our new registration documents will be, same registration documents, but they will now be online, which will be wonderful. Speaking of literacy, I'm going to tag on to Vonda's update and share with you that our HMH coach also recently visited Beecher. We've had a really wonderful partnership with our HMH coach all throughout the year. She came back again and visited our K-2 classrooms. All of our teachers had the opportunity, we provided coverage for all of them, we worked with all of their kiddos, and the teachers were able to go and observe her, instruct a small group lesson. It was really powerful learning, and then that very same day later on in the afternoon during their PLC meetings, we were able to debrief and talk about impact on our own instruction, our next steps, things that we learned, things that we noticed. So it was a really amazing day of learning, and we're very grateful for our continued partnership with our HMH coach. Vonda already mentioned it, but Beecher Celebration of Reading is coming up on Wednesday. We're so excited, it's our version of Read Across America Week, and we are welcoming many of our community members into our school to share their love of literacy. Some folks wrote back to us, and they told us exactly the book that they would be reading because it is their personal favorite, and we love that, and we also have many books available. I didn't mention this earlier, but our sixth-grade students also enjoyed a visit from the middle school. Dr. Jason Tracy came to visit Beecher, this is an annual event, and he brings some of his staff members with them, they greet the students, they get to share some information, and they answer many, many, many questions. It's really fun, it's really exciting to hear the things that the sixth graders are curious about, and it is the first of very many steps that will lead them eventually to leaving Beecher, which we don't like, but continuing their educational journey at the middle school, which we do like because it is a wonderful community. And finally, I have to tell you that there was some naughty leprechauns at Beecher Road School. The first graders found me and they reported to me that naughty leprechauns left green footprints all over their desks. They felt that it was really important that we capture them and that we bring them to the principal's office immediately. The kindergartners tried, they made their leprechaun traps, but I don't think they caught any, but the first graders were very determined to track down these leprechauns because not only did they leave green footprints all over their desks, but they also turned the toilet water green, which was just shocking, apparently. It was a lot of fun, it was a lot of fun. I, I think I disrupted a few classrooms when I walked in and I was swarmed by kiddos telling me about the naughty leprechauns and that I have to come to my office, and showing me the green footprints all over their desks. But I also saw amidst all that fun and joy, I did see signs hanging in some classrooms, and it just said, "I'm lucky because," and all of the kids wrote down reasons why they're lucky, which I thought just warmed my heart and, you know, was a true testament to Beecher and the community that we are creating every single day. And that's it for me, any questions?
Questions? A fun day today.
It was a fun day, yes, and there was lots of green everywhere.
And I'm sure Wednesday will be just as exciting with our readers. Absolutely, it always is. I'm very much, as always, looking forward to it. Next on the agenda is BRS Infrastructure Building Committee update. Usually, Mr. Hughes gives our building committee updates. I don't know if either of you have anything that you want to talk about other than what you already mentioned.
I could just mention that we, in partnership with the town, we, we signed a proposal for MP Planning Group to do a more in-depth demographic and enrollment study. The town is desirous of a second data point compared to the report that we have used in the past, and that's important because it makes a difference. in the past, and that's important because it makes a difference in our reimbursement. We want to get that number as accurate as possible. And we met and got, Antonazzi showed us two sort of updates to their plans, and so, yeah, I think the next step is, as Vonda said, we're inching closer to seeing, "Show me the money." Yeah, but yeah, one being a more, you know, just a separate structure so that we can continue to live in our building.
And learn.
And then the other one is more of a
Build as you fly out of another layer.
To new, you know.
Yep.
In the building that we have.
Any questions about that? There's a meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 3:30 on WebEx if anyone's interested in seeing what's going on in the building committee.
There was last Thursday, so I think it would be the following.
I'm sorry, did I give the wrong date? March 27th, I'm sorry. I'm a week ahead of myself. March 27th, Thursday, March 27th at 3:30. That's exactly what I had written, but rushing the month. Yeah, don't do that, right? Thank you, Donna and Vonda.
I could take a stab at facilities if you want me to.
Facilities, I was just quick because Jeff usually gives the facilities committee report too, and I was just trying to jot down. The facilities committee met last Thursday on the sixth of March.
And the things that I remember that we talked about, things that are in process. Yeah, so, again, through the help of the town and by sharing some of their ARP funds, we have new ADA doors in the north so that if somebody in a wheelchair comes, they don't have to wait to be let in. They have, you know, an automatic door opening system. The fire panel that was approved in our Capitol requests last year for this year is in place now. It's not completed, but it is in process, the upgrade. And we are hopeful that the merry-go-round installation might be on track for spring break.
And the cord rubber.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, everybody cross your fingers for some good weather, and that can happen because that was a great thing, but.
And Ross, Bob Ross, the Guerra construction is coming back, I think, the first week in April, weather permitting, to start the last parts of the work that they were unable to finish.
The site improvement work.
Yep, the drainage.
And landscaping.
Yep.
Right.
Sidewalks in the back.
Good. I also noted that the LED lighting on the pool roof, which, when we had meetings at school would like blink, you know, we had that little disco look in the parking lot, those have been replaced and are working now correctly. Tools for Schools has finished their last walkthrough of the building, and our consultant has written a report, so soon the Tools for School Committee will be meeting to review those recommendations and suggestions. The HVAC issues that Vito continues to monitor, we continue to take care of, and wonderfully, Vito's usually very proactive about having replacement parts, and so, we don't miss a beat. So, all of those things are being taken care of as well. Any questions about facilities? We'll move on to finance.
All right. So, with all credit to Donna.
As always.
We are two-thirds of the way through our current fiscal year. The total projected combined cost across all categories has us at approximately $31,000 under budget compared to $47,000 under budget in February. So, beginning with the lower expense side of the ledger, the 500 Series Other Purchased Services, student transportation tuition interns, we're currently running 53,000, about 53,000 under budget. This is down from a surplus of over 79,000 last month, and in February, we, the collective "we," noticed that we had not encumbered enough funds for one of our special education bus runs. So, this is reflective of that. 200 Series benefits, we show a nearly $24,000 surplus this month compared to about $15,000 last month. While STEAMers' costs are projected to be a bit higher, medical insurance costs are expected to be lower, resulting in this larger projected surplus. 400 Series Purchased Property Services is currently forecast to be about $41,000 under budget. This is compared to about $26,000 last month. So, with winter pretty much behind us, we're feeling comfortable lowering our utility cost projections. Running pretty much on budget, the 700 Series Furniture and Equipment and 800 Series Dues, Fees and Miscellaneous, which includes the Ezra Academy Nurse. And then, on the higher expense side of the ledger, 300 Series Purchased Professional Services, we're forecasting a nearly $73,000 deficit compared to about a $60,000 deficit last month. This $12,000 difference reflects anticipated expenditures for the superintendent search, for which we budgeted about $17,000, although ideally will come in lower. But we also decreased our projected expenses for substitutes, which nets us the $12,000. 600 Series Materials and Supplies, we're at $13,000 over budget. This is unchanged from last month. I will skip the explanation of that, but you can read it if you've forgotten. And the 100 Series, we're looking at an estimated roughly $4,000 deficit, also unchanged from last month. Donna, anything you care to add?
Well, it's nothing very good, but I would add that, as Lynn pointed out in our meeting, that there will be some additional costs associated with Vonda's retirement, and I didn't put the, I didn't think to put those in there when I did this, so our $30,000, you know, might really be half of that. So, which is slim, but we will continue to fight for every penny of it and do our best to hang in there.
Very good, and we'll just keep hoping for nice weather.
Right. It really does help. Yeah, not too hot, not too cold. Use very little energy.
And everything else running smoothly. Any questions from board members on the finance report? Okay, moving on to Policy Committee.
All right. Ms. Williamson. We reviewed these policies last time, so I'm just going to go through it. I move that we adopt Policy 6000, Concept and Roles in Instruction as submitted.
Do I have a second to that motion? Any discussion on Policy 6000? All those in favor? Unanimous, Marsha?
I move that we adopt Policy 6111, School Calendar as Revised.
Do I have a second? Stephen Lawrence? Any discussion on Policy 6111? All those in favor? Unanimous?
I move that we adopt Policy 6114, Emergencies and Disaster Preparedness as Submitted.
Do I have a second? Any discussion on Policy 6114? All those in favor? Unanimous?
I move that we adopt 6114.1, Fire Emergency Drills, Crisis Response Drills as Revised.
Do I have a second? Sarah Beth? Any discussion on Policy 6114.4, uh, 0.1? All those in favor? Unanimous?
I move that we adopt Policy 6121, Affirmative Action Instruction Program as Submitted.
Do I have a second? Lauren? Any discussion on Policy 6121? All those in favor? Unanimous?
I move that we adopt 6142.10, Physical Exercise and Discipline of Students as Revised.
Do I have a second? Mike? Any discussion on Policy 6142.10? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for those of you who are watching, all that policy work happens at another meeting. That's how our board members are so busy, and they were put on 30-day review at our last meeting, and now we have voted on them. And we will soon have another policy meeting where we'll work on another chunk of policy. CAPE Liaison Report.
Yes, so, Vonda, Donna, and I attended the CAPE Day on the Hill last week, which was, I think, pretty well-attended. It was an interesting day. We heard from our state CAPE president, who has actually just been elected to be the national president, so it's kind of exciting that our president is the national. And then, we went over to the Capitol where we had the opportunity to talk with Representative Wielander about some of our concerns, and then she held a press conference, and then I sat in on some of the testimony for about an hour, and one of the hot topics that was being discussed was salary for teachers. A lot of teachers were calling and were there to discuss the meaning of improvement in the salary category, and then special education was another hot topic, I would say. So, it was an interesting, good day.
Yeah. So, we were happy to have representation at CAPE Day on the Hill. Thank you, Donna, Vonda, and Sarah Beth for attending. Any questions about that? Upcoming meeting presentation, our April meeting will contain presentations on summer programs and a curriculum update, so I would ask board members to reach out to Vonda if there's anything specific that you would like to see included in those presentations. We'll also be recognizing Beecher's amazing staff in advance of teacher and staff appreciation, which will be celebrated the week of May 5th through the 9th. So, three things to look forward to at our April meeting. Upcoming meetings, my monthly community service announcement, Curriculum Committee's going to meet Thursday, April 3rd. The agenda will be that agenda from that canceled meeting on literacy, I believe, correct? The Policy Committee's meeting on Monday, April 7th at 4:30 p.m. Finance Committee will meet on Tuesday, April 8th. Is that right? Is that the date? Yes, Tuesday, April 8th. Thank you.
I'll take your word for it.
I don't know. I have March 8th on my notes. That goes to show where my head was, but I think it's April 8th. At 4:30 p.m., the Beecher Infrastructure Building Committee will meet on Thursday, March 27th at 3:30 p.m., and again on Thursday, April 10th at 3:30 p.m., the WebEx. The next meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, April 21st at 7:00 p.m. in the main meeting room of Town Hall. And board members for advanced planning, the preliminary budget hearing for the town is scheduled for Thursday, April 24th. Location to be announced. I haven't gotten that information yet. Okay, moving on to new business. New business is healthy food certification. Do you want to say something about healthy food certification? We do it every year.
Yes, in order to participate in the National School Lunch Program, we are required each year to certify that we will only purchase foods that the federal U.S. Department of School Lunches teams are, teams are healthy, and they provide us a list, and we purchase from that list. Those are the foods that we use. So, we just say that we will, and we do.
And we do. Thank you. So, the, we are required to make the motion according to what is written by the State of Connecticut. So, I would ask that we have a motion for first, healthy food certification. Anybody reading for me?
I move that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1021, 215F, the Woodbridge Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale in the schools under jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Do I have a second to that? Well-read motion. Stephen Lawrence? Motion made by Erin Williamson, seconded by Stephen Lawrence. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Great, now we have the food beverage certification motion.
All right. I move that the Woodbridge Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards and beverages not listed in Section 10221Q of the Connecticut General Statute, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring at the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
Do I have a second to that? Thank you, Lawrence. Okay, any discussion on the food and beverage certification motion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. We have filled our obligation for that. And now, we were, we are up to, this is going to be an amazing meeting, public comment. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, there is no need for executive session this evening, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn at 7:46 p.m. Lauren?
I'll do it. I thought everybody's hands.
Do I have a second to that motion? Mike? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you ever so much. Great evening, great meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.